This is the Sherborne Zoning Board of Appeals. It is the continued hearing on the 31 Hunting Lane, 41 North Main Street combined ZBA project. I'm the zoning chair, Rick Novak. The fellow board members are Jonathan Fitch and Ron Stefan. As all of you know, probably all too well at this point. Okay, I think we're going to start off today with a little update from town council. I see we have Mr. Terry here. Mr. Terry, I've got three questions for you. One, is there any update on the litigation between the town and the applicant on 61B? I guess the answer is not much.
Not much, as you know, we serve them with an appraisal rather than respond with another alternative appraisal. They filed suit. We did have a hearing on preliminary injunctions, which were both denied. The court directed ZBA to keep doing its work, but also found that we had a likelihood of success and gave Mr. Lee Barsky an additional 60 days to produce a alternative appraisal. So that would be due on the June 14th. And then we have a case management conference with the court scheduled for June 16th. Other than that, nothing new.
Mr. Alpin, do you have any dissent?
I do not, other than the fact that I don't think the court ruled that the likelihood of success would be in favor of the town. It just says as a preliminary injunction, it means that not necessarily our case has a very high likelihood of success.
Well, I think he said, I find quote, "a likelihood of success," close quote. Didn't characterize how high he said it was. Okay. You know, it could be miniscule, but that's a likelihood of success. Okay. Second question for you, town council. There's been some discussion during some of the hearings that the board was essentially without jurisdiction to speak to drinking water issues because that was going to be subject to a state process. Would you give us your guidance and wisdom on that subject, please, sir?
All right, well, you know, as you know, your decision you have to make is a balancing of local concerns versus regional affordable housing needs. So local concerns certainly would include the protecting the health and safety of occupants of both the proposed project and also the abutting neighbors. So you're certainly free to look into issues that touch upon those concerns. As I understand it, there's some question about the feasibility of the water in the sewer in connection with this project. And again, it's a balancing question for you guys. So what you'd have to do is take a look and see if there was some overarching health, safety concern that that overrode the need for affordable housing? And is there something about that that concern that a reliance on a later state permit would not satisfy? So that's essentially.
Mr. Alpin, do you?
Into it, the question of whether you could deny it based on that concern is a different question, but I think you can certainly look at it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Alpin, do you have vigorous dissent or otherwise to that?
No dissent, no.
Okay, great. Yeah, because it seems to us we can look into it, but we obviously, we also concede that we can't call up DEP and start giving them marching orders and bossing them around. That's, that's not going to work either. Okay, so. Mike, I think we might be done with you for right now unless we have other legal issues that are likely to come up. Lynn, I know we've got a lot of wood to chop, but I don't see a whole lot of legal stuff ahead of us.
You did, you did say three questions.
That was. I'm sorry, did I talk, did I ask you about the STO standard?
No.
Ah, that was my, that was my third question. To the extent, to the extent that the assembled multitudes want us or some subset thereof want us to turn this down, would you please guide us on what the STO case says about what we need to be able to do that?
Well, I kind of actually touched on it in my prior answer.
Right.
You know, in STO, there was evidence that the project was, was going to result in contamination of Butters Wells. So that supported overturning the ZBA's decision to waive local wastewater regulations. And, and the ZBA, and the court also noted that the, the applicant had not identified a sort of a public water source that was going to be used. So, but the, I think the important takeaway from that again is not that these were concerns, but that there was evidence that the, that there was a reason why the local standard should be applied. And there was evidence that the project as designed was going to more likely than not result in harm to the Butters drinking wells.
Right. Mr. Alpin?
I think that that's a fair summary of the case. I think it's important to note that in that case, it was about waiver of local bylaws, specifically local Board of Health regulations for wastewater. Where in this case, I think it's important that the board understand that that was about waiver of local bylaws. That wasn't anything to do with issues that are regulated strictly by the state. If the, if there, if the town doesn't have any bylaws under specifics, subjects such as groundwater, then you know, it would be, it wouldn't be applicable. It's a different type of case. It isn't the STO standard. The STO standard is really about whether you can waive local bylaws for something.
Okay, and, and that's my understanding too. But, but of course, the town of Sherborne does have extensive local bylaws on groundwater and wells. And, and the applicant has wisely asked us to waive them, which is why the issue was joined. I want to take just a moment now to talk to all the, the non-lawyers. Because to the extent that people want us to, you know, our, our three choices of the board are deny, grant, grant with conditions. Those are our only choices. And to the extent people want us to deny the project, what the STO standard says is we have to have in front of us evidence that it's more likely than not. That was what the court said. Evidence that it's more likely than not that a substantial public health issue would be, would be, would be hurt. And so it can't just be speculation. It has to be real evidence. So as, as people and their consultants are coming before us, when various parties are saying, well, I'm concerned about X, I'm concerned about Y. Those are valid concerns to raise. But to the extent that you're going to be asking this board to turn it down, we need to have, here is evidence. And, and in the, in the STO case, it was a different set of facts. Mr. Alpin's right. They had a, they didn't have a, a, a treatment works. They had, they had just a very large septic system. So it had its nitrates in, in, in the effluent, just as everybody else's septic system does. And there was evidence presented by the Butters that those nitrates were going to get into their wells. It was more likely than not that those nitrates would get into their wells and contaminate their well. So that is the sort of direct connection that, that we need for people who want to argue for a turn down. It doesn't mean we can't talk about other things. It doesn't mean we can't talk about conditions. But I just wanted to emphasize that point. And then two more really quickly, because then I want to get to James Vernon, because I know his, his time is short. Our hearings are, unless they're extended, they're going to end before May 31st. That means our ability to take any new information will shut off on that date. So even if you have the perfect water analysis by the perfect water consultant that absolutely proves by 20 bishops that these new wells for this project are going to kill all the neighbors' wells, we can't take it after that date. The board will still be meeting and we'll be deliberating about what to do in our, in our decision. But if you, this is the all the all the in free folks. If you have any evidence or if you have a consultant who's got any evidence, get it in, into us in the next 24 days. Because unless the applicant extends, that's the shut off period. And, and it's, and it's a, and it's a very hard stop. Once our hearing is closed, we can't take any more evidence. So just, I know people in the prior 40Bs were aware of that, but, but not everyone was. And I just wanted to emphasize it so that everybody heard, heard me. And with that long-winded introduction.
Rick, Rick?
Yes.
Can I ask something about this topic?
Yes.
Bobo Kikiyo?
Yes.
So it, it seems like that, you know, this is a very crucial aspect. In terms of what the, what the water consultants and the peer reviewers are saying is that there's not enough information to determine whether this is really the serious problem that we think it could be. So the, say the Butters can't prove it without getting more information. So it seems like it's incumbent on the developer to provide the sufficient information. So there can be determination made. Because how else can they prove it? You can't even go on the property.
That, that is, that is, that is exactly not the way the statute works. They do not have a burden of proof to provide you with the information. You have a burden of proof. And I'm sorry to say this, but Jonathan, I think you will confirm this is exactly the way the statute reads. You have the burden of proof to produce something. And it may be difficult.
Yeah, how can we meet that if we can't do any testing or go on the property? You know, there's a lot of serious issues and, you know, you know, concerned about the wells and.
I didn't write the statute and I didn't write the regulations.
I don't know, Michael, is that, you know, to give us any information? How can we prove that it's, you know, how can we prove it?
Right, well, that's a conundrum. On the other hand, what they are doing is they are saying, we're not going to deal with that now. We're going to good, we're going to go through the DEP process, which is itself a pretty rigorous process. And the town could certainly participate in that. And that may be where additional testing will have to be done. But, but I understand what you're saying. The ZBA is very limited in its review, frankly. 40B was written to get approvals because they wanted to promote affordable housing, if you ask, if you ask me.
Yeah, I mean, what's, what's the meaning of these hearings?
Paul, okay. I, I think we're going to stop that one there because I am trying to get to, to, to our presenters. I know there's frustration with the process and I get that. But we can, we can speak on that for, for, for the rest of our hearing time and, and not make, not make progress. So Nobis was hired by the town to take a look at the water situation. And James Vernon, I think I see you there on the screen. And can you speak, I think you filed something on the fifth?
Yes, I sent a preliminary report to Gino Carlucci yesterday and some attachments, and I sent him a PowerPoint today. I don't know if everyone has received those.
Well, they're, they're on the website, but I'd invite you, assisted by your ace AV assistant, Mary Ann Neutra, who's playing AV assistant, not planning board chair, to, to make your presentation if you're willing to do so.
That would be great. Mary Ann, I thank you. I don't see you, but I did request to Gino's that I get some help so I can just focus on what I'm talking about and not worry about the technology. So if we could start with the PowerPoint, please, I want to sort of go through that. And then periodically I'm going to request one of those map figures that I sent.
Yes, I'm ready for that.
Excellent. All right. Before I start, can everyone see my first title slide here?
Yeah, you might have, you might have to blank out the little thumbnail people.
Okay. So I do want to thank the board for giving me this chance. And this is a preliminary investigation. We've been under contract just since, I think it was April 26th. So I'm still trying to climb the learning curve on this project. And Gino has sent me a great deal of material and I'm trying to get through it. New, new information is coming in just today. For example, I got information on the two wells that have been drilled to serve the project. So I'm going to give some very preliminary opinions here. And let me say that I don't mind being interrupted with questions. So feel free to do that if you wish. So could we advance to the next slide, please? So the objectives of Nobis's work, we were hired by the town for a few different things, and these may start as, it may change as the project goes on. First one was to assess the adequacy of the new wells to serve the public water system for the two developments. The next one was to assess the potential that the new wells might interfere with existing neighbor wells. And when I say interference, I mean, in terms of the water quantity, it's possible that when the new wells pump, water levels might drop in existing wells. I'm not saying they do or don't. These are just our objectives of things we're trying to look, look at. Another one is to assess the potential that the proposed wastewater system might interfere with the existing neighbors' wells. And that, if there is interference, is more likely to be a water quality. As was mentioned for the town of Stowe, nitrates are a possibility. That's more of a water quality issue than a water quantity. And our other objective was to provide support at meetings such as this. I don't know, Mary Ann, if it's, if you have my maps handy, if you could put figure one up, that would be great. It's not, there it is, beautiful. So I think probably everyone knows. But there, there are two developments. The 41 North Main Street is, is the pines and the 31 Hunting Lane is the Apple Hill. And then in between that, we've got the, the two lots, Lot 11 dash O2 and 11 zero 3B. And that's where the new wells for the proposed public water system are going. So they're going to be kind of in between and there'll be water mains going both ways. All right, if we could go back to the PowerPoint, sir, I guess would be the third slide now, please. Well, this is great. I really appreciate this, Mary Ann, thank you. So our status is, our contract was just signed. We've done a preliminary review of information that we've been provided. And thanks to Gino for sending me lots of good stuff. And then in this first phase, we're, we're to present our initial results as I'm doing right now. Next slide, please. So here are some notes on the hydrogeologic setting, bedrock. And that underlies everything. And it's important because all the wells in this particular case are drilled into the bedrock. It's mapped according to both map, Mass GIS, the data layer, and the Bedrock Geological Map of Massachusetts calls it as metamorphosed volcanic anigneous rock. And without getting too academic here, the important point is that this rock is hard. It's crystalline and it has no pore spaces. So unlike some rocks or soils, which are like a sponge and can hold water in between the grains, this material only can hold water in fractures, cracks or some kind of break or structure in the rock. So that's going to become important as we go through this. Overlying the bedrock is overburden, which you can think of as soil, sand, gravel, clay are all possibilities. Most of the area, and I'll show you a map in a bit later, is sand, what's called sandy glacial till. And this is material deposited by the glaciers during the ice age. It, it's fairly sandy. It can store some water, but it's probably not sufficient aquifer to tap for a public water system. Maybe a dug well could serve a house in it. But as I mentioned, all the wells I know of in the area are drilled into bedrock. Why do we even look at it, though? It is important because it can provide storage to those bedrock aquifers underneath. So any water that reaches the bedrock, unless the rock's right at the surface as a ledge outcrop, the water's going to go through the soil first. And, and the vicinity of our site, the wells I've looked at tell you how deep bedrock was encountered. And it ranges anywhere from one foot to 28 feet thick. I have not walked the site yet. There may, may or may not be outcrops there. Some of you probably know, in which case we'd say it's zero. So generally, from the standpoint of wells and water supply, we'd like to see some bedrock. Thicker's better than, I mean, overburden. Thicker's better than thinner because it has the ability to store water. Nearby wells, as far as I know, and someone local can contradict me. But as far as I know, they're all drilled into bedrock. I looked at a set of records that Gino sent me, I think from the Sherborne Health Department. Those wells, the depth range is anywhere from 200 feet to 1,005 feet. Generally, I get a little nervous when I see a lot of very deep wells because it costs money to drill deep and they wouldn't have drilled that deep for a house unless they hadn't found the water yet. So I'm a little concerned about that. The yields reported range anywhere from seven and a half to 12 gallons a minute. Some of those are, are what's called airlift yields where the well driller cleans out the well with compressed air when he's finished drilling. Some of them are from four hour pumping tests, but they're all preliminary. When you pump a well over a long period of time, it usually, not always, but usually the long sustainable yield is less than those initial yields. So they're not, they're not great. They're adequate for houses, but it's a little concerning. This morning I received the data on the, the new wells drilled for the Pines and Apple Hills. They were drilled in 2019, I think maybe it might've been August. I don't know how far apart they are. If there's someone there who does, I'd be interested. They're both quite deep, 820 feet deep. And they have been subjected to eight hour tests, which is good. It's better than the simple airlift or the four hour test. And water levels were monitored during those tests, so that's a good start. Prelimarily, well, one, they're rating it at 25 gallons a minute. So far, the data I've seen looks like that might be fairly reliable. A longer term test will be needed and the DEP will require that. But the initial data, I tend to agree, it looks pretty good for 25 gallons a minute. I am worried about well two. They did an eight hour test on that one. The yield is not as great. It airlifted seven. They tried to pump it at 10 and at 15, but those were not too successful. And so surely the sustainable yield appears less than 10. And I think it's probably going to be less than seven. So I am concerned about that second well and its ability to, to meet the needs. I understand at least one of those wells, presumably the second one, has been hydrofractured already. I'm not sure, but I saw a reference to that. So that's my preliminary assessment of those. I just got the info this morning. So I would like, you know, more time to take greater, a greater look at those, at the data that's been given. The other thing we look at in terms of, in addition to gallons a minute, is water quality. And there are some records from the Health Department from water tests on the neighboring wells. And then some water samples that have been collected from the two new wells for the project already. For the most part, the water quality looks pretty good in the area. The new wells and some of the surrounding wells have what I would call moderate alkalinity and hardness. It's not a health issue. May influence how much soap and detergent you have to use, but it's really not a big problem. Iron is elevated in some of the wells. Again, that's not a health issue. If it gets really bad, you know, people will see rust stains in their plumbing fixtures. But the levels I've, I've looked at in these wells aren't, aren't too bad. They're slightly elevated above standard, but that's not a terrible concern. Polyene, which is a volatile organic chemical, was detected in both of the new wells. We see that sometimes in new wells. It may go away with time, but it has to be watched. If it persists, it's not good. But it's, I, I often see it after wells are drilled. And so with more, with additional pumping, as the DEP will require, that may go away. If it doesn't, then that's a problem. And everyone, I'm sure has heard of PFAS at this point. I haven't seen any test results anywhere in the area. So I don't know if it's going to be a problem in Sherborne, but I mention it as something to look out for. In New Hampshire, PFAS testing is now required on all public wells. I, I haven't checked the latest regulations yet in Massachusetts. I suspect it will be if it is not required yet. So that's, I'm, I don't know if it's a problem. It, it may well not be, but it's something to be aware of.
What does the acronym stand for?
Oh, I was afraid someone would ask. Poly, I may get it wrong and so I won't be angry if someone corrects me. Polyfluoroalkyl. It's, it's a chemical name, it's something like that. But it's a whole category of chemicals that have been used in a number of processes, industrial processes, plastics, coatings. If you wear a rain jacket, maybe before a few years ago, it probably has some PFAS in it. It's very common. It's in beauty products. And it's, it's nasty because it can spread both in groundwater, but also it can have an airborne spread. And some of you may have heard of the St. Go-Bain case in New Hampshire. Plastic factory emitted it for years from their smokestacks. And then it fell with rain in the surrounding towns and a number of both private and public wells were contaminated. Small levels of it, probably lots of places. And it's like most things, it's a question of quantity before, how much of it you have before you have to worry. But it's something to be concerned about. But I'm not pointing a finger. I've seen, I've just seen no data one way or the other that the Sherborne area may be fine.
Okay, and, and, and for someone stupid like me, is this a, essentially the forever chemicals we always keep hearing about?
I don't know if they're forever. They are pretty persistent in the environment, but, but they are treatable. There, there's water treatment technologies. The town of Merrimack, New Hampshire is, is building a water treatment plant. It may be built by now. P's Air Force Base just put theirs online. So it's treatable, but if untreated, it's fairly persistent. It's not like some of the gasoline petroleum products that bacteria will gobble up in a few years.
All right, please, please continue, thank you.
Okay. Next slide, please. So we've been asked, as I mentioned, to look at possible impacts due to pumping the new wells. And it's really too soon for me to say, other than it's possible, it's possible. But we need to do some more work. As I mentioned, in the bedrock, water only flows through the fractures. So we need to understand that plumbing system if we're going to be able to say such and such a well is probably safe, but such and such another well might possibly be impacted. Depends on whether these fractures connect from the new wells for the water system to any of the private wells. And so if the board approves our next phase of work, we'll be doing what, what I call a photo liniment analysis or fracture trace analysis, where we look at air photos to try to get an idea of which way these fractures might be trending. We would hope to confirm that with looking at some outcrops in the field. If we see cracks in the rock in the outcrops and they point the same way, the same compass directions as what we're seeing on the air photos, then we really think we might have a real fracture zone. So other towns where I've done this, we've end up kind of saying that certain wells in certain directions, we think they're probably pretty safe. And other wells, in other directions that line up along these fractures, there might be a concern. And that could translate, should translate, in my opinion, to monitoring those wells during a pumping test of the new project wells. And the DEP will be requiring that pumping test. So I would advocate strongly for monitoring some of these homeowner wells, especially if they appear to be along fracture trends, to actually see if there's any impact when the new wells pump. to actually see if there's any impact when the new wells pump. So that's that's a quick version of that. The other category we've been asked to look at, and again, I don't have enough information yet to say, but would there be impact on any of the homeowner wells due to the new wastewater system? So a number of investigations will be conducted as part of the Title V approval process that will help us answer that question. Including the work I just described, the outcrop work and the photo liniment work. But a mounding analysis will give us an idea of just what the buildup of mound underneath the groundwater mound underneath the leach field will be. We need to get a handle on which way groundwater will be flowing in the subsurface. Because the wastewater then will preferentially mix with the groundwater and then flow in that direction, so that might tell us that, again, some wells might be of more concern than others. So again, this will depend on the fractures. If there is an impact, that would mean the wastewater would get from the soil, the overburden, down into the fractures, and then possibly to a new well, and I cannot say at this point whether that's going to happen or how likely it's going to happen. But that's something that needs to be looked into. And then nitrate analysis is very important to this. Just how diluted will the wastewater be by the time it reaches the property line or one of these neighboring wells? That's the key question.
Okay, and just to be clear, I know you've come on very quickly and ramped up very quickly, so we're very grateful. They are putting this through a wastewater treatment plant.
So we would look at the resulting nitrate concentrations that are expected after treatment.
Great. Okay, fine. Just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a miscue. Good.
No, no, and that's good, and it may be the result of the analysis. You don't have to worry about this one, but at this point, I can't say yet.
Okay, thank you. Anything else that you have for us tonight?
Well, I've got some more maps, and I think, what, one more slide? Let's go to the other slide, and then I'll just show you a couple of the other maps.
Right, I wanted to see that one big aquifer that you had in your it was off to the northeast.
Sure. Well, let's go to the maps now. I don't think we need the soils map, but let's go to the third map. This is showing the overburden geology. So the little pale tan north-south band that you see just west of the railroad tracks, those are swamp deposits. There is a wetland in there that's mapped, and those of you who have been there would confirm that probably. And I understand the project proposes to do directional drilling underneath that wetland to get a water main from the wells, which are in the purple zone over to the pines. And then there'll be another water main going west towards Apple Hill. The violet or purple patches you see are outcrop or shallow or outcrop close to the surface, but there's not much soil in those areas, according to the geologic map. The rest of it, then, is this thin, that's a thin glacial till, and I mentioned the glacial till earlier. It's it's a mishmash of materials deposited during the Ice Age by the glacier, so it's typically cobble, sand, silt, clay. This area, looking at the soils and descriptions, is probably sandy, sandy glacial till, so it would have some ability to store water, which could be a good thing. Because it could provide recharge to the wells below. However, as I mentioned, I'm concerned that some areas of sites, the till, the soil deposits are very thin. And so that would limit their ability to store water. Okay, and then the next map, please, the last one. I think that's the map you mentioned, Rick.
Yes.
This is at a smaller scale, and that blue you see off to the northeast is a mapped aquifer, and this is one of those Santa Gravel or stratified drift aquifers, and these are the high-producing aquifers in Massachusetts. Most town wells, especially bigger ones, tap this sort of aquifer, and this is in the overburden, not the bedrock. There are some other public, small public water systems near the site, just south of it. You see those pale blue circles. Those are what's called Zone Ones, which are protection areas around public wells. You see one for the school and a couple of others down there. There's also, I believe, one not shown here for fifty-nine North Main for a new development. It's gone in. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if that well is pumping yet. But the records for that well are available, and those wells had to be hydrofracked to get enough water. I don't know if the product is built and people are living there yet.
Well, people are living there, so I'm assuming they're drinking water, flushing their toilets, but.
So that might be something the town would look at, is how those wells are performing, because it's, you know, it's close by, and it'd be interesting to see if they're holding up okay.
Got it. Thank you.
The pink hatched area is what's called a Zone Two, which is a wellhead protection area for a public well, and that's considered the area that the water could come from when the well pumps. Which also means if there were contamination there, the contamination could reach that well, so the project does not overlie one of those, but it comes fairly close.
Got it.
So if we could go back, I think I had two more slides, then I can either, you know, stop or take questions.
Keep going.
Okay, so to summarize my Phase One, and I say it's very preliminary, and we kind of split it up into the two parts, because I knew I was going to be speaking at this meeting. And so some of the things I would normally include in a Phase One haven't been done yet. We'll call it Phase Two, if the town chooses to move forward. But some of the concerns I have so far are the thin overburden, at least in some places. It's not all thin. Can limit the groundwater recharge to the bedrock aquifer. So that just means bedrock wells should be well-tested over a period of time, more than eight hours, to make sure the yields can really hold up. All homes in the area are on bedrock wells. There's no town water, so there isn't, you know, there isn't a fallback. If a well has a problem, you can't just write a check to connect them up to the town water system. Many of the wells have to be drilled deep, and that's not bad. It just indicates that the shallow aquifer is not always productive of water. It's an indication. Some of the wells have had to be hydrofractured to get enough water. It's fairly common in this part of Sherborne. I am concerned, and I say it's preliminary, I just got the info this morning, that well two may not have seven gallons a minute sustainable. I really am not prepared to say yet whether any of the neighboring wells will be impacted by either the new wells or the wastewater system, but it's it's something that needs to be looked at, in my opinion. I certainly can't rule it out. And last slide, so I've made some recommendations of things I think that we should look at. I think I should spend more time on well two, look at the existing data, and really see if I think seven gallons a minute can hold up. I'm a little skeptical at first, but I'm not saying for sure at this point. I've started compiling information on the neighbors' wells. I've got a table that I've made that I emailed to Gino. I don't know if it's it's up here, and it's just got a bunch of numbers on it, but that's what I use to compute those average yields and depths that I've talked about. The state of Massachusetts, the Energy and Environmental, the EEA has a database, and there are about ten more wells in the general areas that are on that database, in addition to the ones that Gino sent me from the Board of Health, so I want to pull those well reports and get them into my spreadsheet also. Then I want to plot all of those on the map, and we may see trends of where there are high-yielding wells, low-yielding wells, or where there's, you know, high iron or high hardness that might be useful. Then I mentioned this photo liniment analysis, where we look at air photos under stereoscope and try to get an idea of which way these fracture traces might be trending. And then I'd like to visit the site, if the applicant will give me permission, or if not, the surrounding areas. Look at some bedrock outcrops and see which way the fractures point in the outcrops. Recon the nearest neighboring wells, make sure I know where on the lots they are, because you know, some of the lots are big enough that it may make a difference, just where on the lot the well is located. Folks in town may be able to tell me that. So I may not have to visit to do that, but it's always helpful to me to see a site if possible. So that's the quick blast. Sorry to talk so fast, and I'm happy to take any questions.
No, it's a good job, and playing catch-up, as we all are. It sounds like your request to this board tonight would be that we would authorize you to take the next step.
I think it's helpful. I think there's more to be done, you know, not making an academic study of it, but I think additional information will really focus areas where you might be concerned and other areas where maybe you wouldn't be so concerned. So, yes, yes, if the board is generally favorable to it, then I would write up a written proposal to, you know, to add some more tasks and budget.
Where we're particularly interested in your input is the areas where, in your view, we can't just rely on the state. I mean, if there are areas where we know the state does a good job, simply tell us that.
Sure.
Because the applicant will have to go through the state process. But areas where the state job might not adequately protect local interests, that's sort of our core jurisdiction here. And to the extent that you can focus on that, that is helpful to us. What would your timeline be for being able to get back to us?
Well, I could get a proposal to you early next week. I heard the May thirty-first deadline. Did not realize that things were that urgent. So I would try to, you know, pick the most what I think the most helpful thing would be with using your suggestion of looking a bit at more at the state regs and highlighting the things that might not be covered as well by the state requirements, and focus on those since the time is short.
All right. Fellow board members, do you have a sense, where were you both? There, now I see you both. Whether or not this is something we want to do, we are short on time, so I don't want to defer it to another meeting.
Well, we are short on time, but I'm just comparing the process on this project to the other projects that we have that we have approved, and seems to me there's a lot of outstanding questions, and I would very much appreciate if NOBUS would proceed with their work.
I agree with that. It's regrettable that the time is as short as it is with as many items identified as requiring analysis, but I would definitely support authorizing NOBUS to continue their work, and I thank them for the work they've done already. Very, very helpful.
Mr. Fitch, do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I would move that the board approve Phase Two work as described by NOBUS.
Okay, Mr. Stefan?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, I, we have to do it by roll call. Mr. Fitch, your motion, why don't you go first?
Fitch, yes.
Stefan?
Stefan, yes.
No back, yes, as well. Motion carries three to nothing. Now, next up, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Vernon. We'll look forward to hearing from you. You're welcome. I think you have your water expert on and wanted, I believe, her to have some equal time, so go ahead.
Yeah, and on this issue, we're going to have to have an online, offline conversation about who's paying for what piece of work that you've just voted on. We haven't had any opportunity to have an input, or at least have Susan respond before you've taken your vote, but I'm going to turn it over to Susan Honeywell now.
Right, and just on that point, for Chris Alpin's benefit, Paul Haverdey had reserved rights on this before, so that's then your right to remind everybody that what the applicant is going to pay for is open. I'm being reminded that there are some hands up, but I can't see them. So.
This is Susan Honeywell. Am I allowed to? From onsite engineering, I just had a few questions from Mr. Vernon.
Yes, but Susan, just before we get to you, apparently there were some questions on his presentation.
Daryl Beardsley had to, her hand up.
Okay, Daryl, you're next.
Okay, Daryl Beardsley, Chair of the Board of Health. Hi, Jim, nice to.
Hi, Daryl. How are you?
Well, okay. Great year to be Chair of a Board of Health. So I have a Board of Health memo. Unfortunately, I just discovered a missing section as I was about to send it, so I have to find out what happened to that. But there are some possible ideas, and maybe I'll pluck them out of the report and prepare a list and send it to the ZBA, and you can decide whether you think it would be helpful for, you know, things to focus on for NOBUS. As you were just mentioning, you know, maybe zero in on a few things, so there are some of those things in the memorandum from the Board of Health. And then the other, just comment I had, I know when we've looked at nitrate loadings coming out of whatever sort of septic system treatment is going on. In this case, there'll be a wastewater treatment facility and then the groundwater discharge point. But nitrate is usually used as just a marker, so it's only one of many chemicals of concern or contaminants of concern in the effluent, so it's used as a way to trace and to model against. And often with wastewater treatment plants, it's one of those things that I feel like it relates back to history when nitrates were one of the bigger concerns in addition to some bacteria and viruses, but now we've got a lot more concerns. So I just want to be cautious that we don't entirely rely on that, because if there are, then denitrifying bacteria in the wastewater treatment plant, yes, you're going to have lower nitrates, but not necessarily lower of other contaminants. So I don't want to get confused by the, gee, that number's low. Everything's okay, kind of thing. Does that make sense?
It makes sense if you're asking me. I understand what you're saying. It's a good point.
All right, thank you, Daryl. We're having a technical difficulty. I'm not seeing any of the electronic hands being raised, so Jean, if you can help me out on that. John Garrison, I understood your hand was raised before we were going to go to Ms. Honeywell?
Yeah, but I'll save mine for later.
Okay, thank you. And who was that? Oh, it was Lynn, but Lynn, we got you. All right, so Ms. Honeywell, please go ahead. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you. And thank you, Jim. That was.
Hi, Susan, how are you?
Good. I think that that presentation summarized where we are very well. And so thank you for your efforts. You had a couple of questions along the way. I figured I'd answer them.
Oh, thank you.
The two wells are just over fifty feet apart.
Okay.
That is in accordance with the DEP guidelines and regulations. They don't want to see them closer than fifty feet apart.
Okay.
If they are, then they have to be considered a well field. If they're fifty feet or more apart, then they can be considered as separate sources.
Okay.
The other question that you had was hydrofracking. We only had to hydrofrack well number two, as you guessed correctly.
Okay.
I don't think that's on the well completion report, because we went back after the fact and hydrofracked that, so.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't sure. I thought I saw an allusion to it somewhere, but then when I looked at the report, I didn't really see it.
Okay. Um, as far as PFAS goes, uh, we did not do any testing out there at the time. Um, that is one of the. Parameters that will have to be tested when we do the full pumping test.
Okay.
And, and then if it was approved as a. Permanent public water supply, it would be continued to be monitored in accordance with MastEP. Uh, guidelines, so Massachusetts, similar to New Hampshire, has passed. Uh, PFAS as a contaminant of concern that is, um, regulated now.
Okay.
And, um. I guess the other, the two other points is, um. We, similar to you, have had experience with having trace it. Could, um, concentrations of toluene. From, um, a drill right after a well was drilled, so the concentrations here were. One point three and four point three. Parts per billion and that was compared to the Massachusetts contaminant level, which is a thousand, so. Again, that's another parameter that would be monitored. When we do the full scale, um, pumping test. And we would have to do that at the beginning of the test as well as at the conclusion of. The pumping test period.
I wouldn't be surprised if that just goes away.
That's in my experience.
Seen, yeah.
Yeah, I, I share your experience, it's similar, so. Um, and then I guess the, the final thing is, um. I think you can, the, doing the fracture trace analysis makes sense, uh, just in this case, two wells fifty feet apart. Obviously, they inter, um, intersected different fractures, that's why one of them is capable of, you know, looks like twenty five gallons per minute and the other one. Hopefully can sustain seven gallons per minute, so, um, your point is well taken that just because you're in a budding well. Um, and depending on the depth, if you're not intersecting the same fracture, you may or may not see any impact at all, so. Um, that was, uh, an important note to make.
Okay. Yeah.
That's all I had, if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, most helpful clarifications, and it appears that all you water experts know each other, it's very, very incestuous.
Susan and I have been on a committee together.
Right, right, well, that's good, that means, that means we're talking to the right people, know what they're talking about. Um, all right, I think there was also a request for a short presentation from the, uh, Butters. Uh, Water Consultant, uh, from Creative, uh, Land and Water, uh, Dr. Wang, are you there? Maybe not, oh, there he is. Sir?
Thank you, Marian.
Uh, yes, if I could interrupt just to thank Marian too, that was a big help, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, appreciate it, uh, Dr. Vernon, we were at, uh, the other project of the fields and I think it, uh. Consultant, uh, water engineer also clarifying some of my questions and, uh. So, I, I reviewed, uh. Well pumping data and I don't want to repeat things that Dr. Warren already discussed. Just, uh, the same concern if, uh, the follow-up testing of tolerating. Uh, if persistent, then it probably will be. Uh, major concern, maybe indicating some other VOCs, maybe, uh, the travelment this part. As far as the fracture connections, that's, that's why we, we do like to. See some kind of a good planning of monitoring. If pumping of this well will impact the neighbors or other wells in the vicinity. So that's, that's one of the things, of course, nobody can predict at this point because of the fractures pattern, it's very. Uh, hard to predict, I think with, uh, with the fracture mapping will help probably the major concern of the wells. Uh, the phase two study Dr. Vernon is going to do. So we would like to probably see the. Applicants to follow up and, uh, providing some detailed plan. Uh, with the, under, uh, the zoning board condition or down the road. With, uh, DEPs, uh, well permitting. Uh, we do have a concern about is we were. Um, I visited the site on April twenty ninth. Uh, to the Butters, so we are not allowed to go on the applicant's property. Uh, during that visit, we, uh, walked around the perimeter and we did notice, uh, water impoundment. In the. I, I would say in the vicinity or at the close or to the edge of the leaching, proposed leaching field. So, that water, according to the neighbors, uh, Mr. Callahan, who lived there for thirty years. That water body, uh, presents. Uh, every year and, uh, probably from winter time to June or July, so lasting quite a long time. And, uh, by looking at the USGS contour maps. And, uh, that water body seems like it connected to further downstream wetlands. And just the persistence of this water, according to wetland hydrology. It would almost call, I'm not almost, I'm confident that it's qualifying the. Uh, hydraulic condition as a wetland, because it's impounded more than one week. For, uh, during the growing season at this, we see, so if you're checking on the Hydrate Soil's Handbook. Of, uh, the Federal Hydrate Soil Handbook, that's what be qualified as wetlands. So, and the connection since we cannot verify, but, uh. Mr. Bot Kiki, uh, has the wetlands in his front yard, if you're looking on the maps. You can show, you can see like a valley from connecting that water impoundment to his front yard. And it is a significant water every year flowing through his yard from this site to the wetlands. At the downstream, so. Uh, you know, a reporter, we kind of illustrated that, just, uh, we would like, uh. Request that the board either collaborate with, uh, the town wetlands peer review. Uh, to take a good look at the situation. And, uh, the other concern is given this persistent of the water impoundment. The hydrogeologic impact adding such a huge volume in that general area. And shows obviously have, uh. Rather, uh, narrow path going towards forty one. Hunting lane, it's a, it's a quite a concern, that concern, not just the water quality or nitrogen because of such a volume going toward there. So, they, the, uh, the neighbor has. A private well and a private septic system hold that water, because we, in general, the. Groundwater monitoring most of the time is just require a homogeneous kind of assumption of. The soil condition to do, uh, groundwater mounting, but they don't really require as detailed in DEP recently. I start encountering, uh, encountering requests, uh, doing a mod flow. Like in this case, I think it would be, uh, definitely a case would require. Because of the features such as shallow overburden and the, uh, on surface over, uh, uh, impoundment right almost. In the area of the proposed disposal, uh, fields. So how would that impact, it's really, uh, I, I have a real. Uh, concern from what I saw there, uh, on April twenty ninth. So, as far as whether we're qualifying as, uh, any other outstanding resource like a vulnerable pool. We, I, I couldn't make the determination at this point, but, uh, I would think, would like to see. Third-party reviewer. Uh, get a direct, uh, uh, opportunity to look into through this, uh, water body at the right time, uh, of, uh. Biological conditions, so. Uh, and, uh. Yeah, that's the major, as, as far as the Jordan, as I just go, went through and, uh, so we did look at, uh. The applicant's response to our initial comments, so it's pretty much. We understand it's a very helpful that the applicant is going to. Follow the DEP standard procedure, we would appreciate a little bit. Uh, more is to see how that procedures. Are incorporated into this, uh, for this specific. Project on the site and giving all the, uh. Typical, you know, more specific geological condition that can be like. Like in the groundwater mounting analysis and what kind of a data. Uh, if you don't have a good data, it's basically garbage in, garbage out for. For a computer model, so it is important and should be comprehensive data. Uh, collection and, uh, so convincing data is produce, will produce convincing, uh. Analysis result, so that's, that's what I have at this point and, uh, appreciate that the board allow us to, uh. Uh, providing our, uh. Input on this.
No, that, that, that's great and thank you, um, to the extent that, um. You are able before the hearing closes to, uh, give us more concrete, uh, recommendations. Because issue X will not be well enough covered by state regulation Y, we think you should do Z. Um, that, that's essentially, um, uh, our bailiwick, uh, standing in the shoes of the Board of Health, the cons come on this. Um, uh, Michael Malanowski, I know you had, uh, your hand up, I'm gonna want to talk with Tom Houston about the, uh, the claimed infernal pool, but, uh, Michael, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh, Michael Malanowski here, um, I know Mr. Wang had, um. Alluded to the requirement for additional testing both on the water and the wastewater. Um, I know Susan had touched on it briefly, uh, relative to. The aspects of the public water supply and I'm gonna turn the floor over to her to sort of. Go over the remainder of that, uh, we also have David Frumano, uh, Frumato from Onsite Engineering who. Can also discuss the, uh, procedures under the DEP approval process for. The wastewater treatment plant, um, it should also be noted that. Um, in most of these cases for wastewater treatment, the water quality standard that goes to those. Leaching fields is drinking water quality, so there's considerable amounts of treatment that is done on. The affluent at the treatment works before it even gets to the leach field, so I know there's been a lot of discussions about. The water quality that's going to be going up to those leach fields, um, and David can sort of elaborate on that, so. I'm gonna, if I can, turn the floor over to Susan now.
Thank you, Michael. Um, so just to elaborate again on the water quality testing, since that was one of the, uh, concerns that. Uh, the consultant brought up, um, as part of the pumping test. Uh, I, we reviewed it in our response to Mr. Wang's letter, but, uh, the. Water quality testing is really significant and you. Haven't seen it at any of the private wells. Um, fifty nine North Main Street, I believe a reference was made when that was getting permitted that. The Board of Health wished it could be permitted through the DEP so that there would be, uh, water quality. Testing requirements and long-term testing, so. Um, you know, the DEP, it wants to ensure that the water is safe to drink and so. Um, testing includes the bacteria, inorganic chemicals, nitrate, nitrate, nitrate. Perchlorate, all regulated and unregulated, volatile organic compounds, secondary contaminants. Synthetic organic chemicals and as, uh, I alluded to before, they now require PFAS sampling as well, so. That's during the pumping test at the end of the either forty eight hour or five day, uh, pumping test, depending on what DEP approves. Um, all of those parameters have to be sampled for and tested at a certified lab. Um, and then long-term testing, they, the DEP will put together a, um, sampling. Um, program that the public water system has to follow on a annual basis and that includes again bacteria sampling. Monthly, um, and all of those other parameters, uh, usually annually until. It shows that there's not a concern with that particular parameter, so I guess I just wanted to highlight that, um, part of the regulation. With regard to Mr. Wang's concerns.
Thank you. Your format. I think you're muted, sir.
Yeah, thank you, uh, for Susan's clarification and, uh, it definitely will. Uh, ease some concerns for this wells and, uh. So for, for the, if we can follow up, uh, well, I guess, uh, on the septic possible impact. Of the monitoring of the groundwater mounting and connected to this really thin. Overburden aquifer, uh, in the, uh, Legion Field area and that possible. Uh, impact on the neighbors, especially probably should look in. In the context of, uh, that geology and topography. Uh, in the context of rather than assume on average, I don't know what kind of model you use in general, so. I know most of the time DEP allows for, uh, hand-dutch method, which is probably if it's a deep. Uh, relatively uniform. Uh, soil condition and aquifer, it's generates very conservative groundwater mounting. However, this case I do feel that it will probably necessary to go a little bit more. Uh. Beyond just, uh, uh, the hand-dutch method, so I, I know there's a couple cases DEP required. Uh, mud flow analysis is three-dimensional, it's a better topography incorporated in the model for analysis.
Okay, uh, Ms., Ms. Sweet, did you have something to say before we went to, uh, Mr. Frumato?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm happy to go after him, it's, um.
Okay, sorry, you're, you're, you're. I know, go ahead. Dave, you're up.
Uh, evening, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you as, uh, again introduce, uh, David Frumato, President of Onsite Engineering, um, and. Uh, certainly, I, I hope that, uh, everyone had a chance to, to read the, uh, response, um, we provided to. Give a little bit more context relative to the process, you know, I would just like to reiterate, um, you know, what's been said previously that. Um, the testing that. Uh, typically goes into assessing a site and approving a site is very rigorous, um, you know, for this particular site. Uh, the intent was to actually, um. Provide a mod flow model, it'll probably be a two-dimensional, um, which essentially that means that. Um, you'll model the overburden as well as the bedrock to understand the interactions between the two. Uh, particularly as it relates to, uh, groundwater mounting and as, you know, um. You know, the treated effluent migrates from the leaching field into the surrounding, uh, you know, soil and groundwater, so. You know, certainly understand that, um, you know, that information is important. Um, and again, uh, as we noted in our letter, uh, the process of determining the program for assessing the site. Is, is multifaceted and multi-stepped, right, so essentially, um, there, there is a, a development program that's. Presented to the state, the state reviews it, they comment on it, uh, there is, you know, public input. Possible during that process and at the end of the day, uh, the testing program that comes out of that. Um, is something that, you know, the consultants and the state feel. Depending on obviously what the data reveals, would be appropriate to determine, uh, the effects of that discharge from. Groundwater quality, mounding, um, potential breakout impacts to sensitive receptors, including wetlands and stuff like that, so all that. Information, uh, is going to be, uh, compiled, developed and analyzed, uh, you know, in this. Numerical computer model to really understand what the effects of that discharge are going to be and, you know, just also in, in, you know. Following up on what Michael had said, it is very important to understand that. The, the, the regulations are written such that, um, the, the effluent coming from a. the, the effluent coming from a tertiary level wastewater treatment facility for a groundwater discharge needs to be at groundwater quality standards at the point of discharge. It's, it's, there's no additional treatment happening in the leaching field. Everyone who has a septic system in and around this site, they're relying on the soils and the bacteria in the soils to do a lot of the treatment to avoid potentially polluting their own drinking water wells. So it's very important to understand that all that process is being taken care of in the treatment facility. It's being monitored, tested and managed actively so that what actually discharges to the ground from this particular site is already at groundwater quality standards. And those standards do vary and it proximity to wells, sensitive receptors, stuff like that actually do factor into the level of treatment that's required, the level of monitoring that's required and the level of testing that's required. So it's, it's not just a, you know, blank, one size fits all type approach. It is very site-specific. And that all, that process, you know, does get vetted heavily with the state. You know, the, the process starting from site assessment all the way through into, you know, final groundwater discharge permit issuance takes about a year. So it's, it's not, it's a lengthy process. It's, it's not something that happens overnight. There's multiple steps along the way. It's, it's iterative. And, you know, typically when you go through that process, but by the time you get to the end, you, you, everyone's confident that, yeah, the site is, is suitable for the level of discharge that was looked to be secured and that the treatment system that's been proposed and, and designed and approved is adequate for the level of treatment necessary to meet the requirements and make sure again that groundwater is not going to be being polluted and that sensitive receptors in and around the site are not going to be impacted. So all, all that's going to be part of the program that's developed and approved by the state.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
Lynn, did you want to speak now?
Um, I, I just quickly wanted to speak with regard to the issue raised about the, 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 the water that was seen on, on the sidewalk. And, and we do have pictures on, yes, indeed, there is water. Sometimes in the spring in that area, it does recede. And in fact, two days after the sidewalk, it had receded considerably. It, it's not there from January to July. So I take exception to that point. We, we do have a wetlands scientist who has been out there. And there is absolutely no vernal pool on Mr. Labarski's property. It's categorized as a flooded depression. And unfortunately, we, we did not get information on, on these. We didn't get these letters until five minutes before the meeting. So he's not here to speak to that. But I, I did just want to kind of clarify that I know people are concerned about it. We recognize there's a concern about it. And it's something that obviously, again, during the DEP process is, is, is going to be looked at. And, you know, last, if, if there are matters concerning in order of conditions or wetlands on the site, they are not allowed to be dressed because of the new Weston case during the CBA process. Thank you.
I'm not sure that characterization of the Weston case is correct. I think what it means is that you can't file an NLI. But wearing the shoes of the Conservation Commission and being asked to waive the Conservation Commission's local rules and regulations, what I was going to ask Mr. Houston to do for us was react to, and it doesn't have to be right now, because as Lynn points out, a lot of this is sort of late breaking news. This flooded, flooded depression, vernal pool, wet spot, whatever it is, if you could guide us as our peer reviewer as to how we ought to react to that, given that all of the local Conservation Commission rules and regulations that might be applicable to that are being asked to be waived by us. Lynn is correct that whatever the state has to say about it under the state rules, that, that'll be a different process and that'll necessarily come later. But if there's something in our local rules that we're being asked to waive, we'll, we'll want to hear from you on that. And then it does not have to be right now unless you're ready to speak to it right now. But I'm guessing you're probably not.
Well, let, let me just raise one point, which is that part of our original scope, which has not been authorized, was to have our subconsultant Echotech come onboard to identify and evaluate wetland issues. So we to some extent can do that, but Echotech is far better qualified than we to evaluate wetland issues.
If they were so authorized, how quickly could they do that?
I don't know. I would have to discuss that with them. They, like everyone, are very busy these days, but I understand what the deadline is.
All right, Mr. Alvin, Ms. Sweet. How do you feel about authorizing the peer reviewer? Do that. Ms. Callahan, I see your, I see your hand, but we're trying to get this taken care of.
We, we, we don't, we're, we're not going to authorize that at this point in time. I'm going to have to talk offline with Paul about it.
Okay. We, 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 we appreciate that, that everyone's reacting to late break news and therefore haven't had a chance to think about it. All right, Mr. Houston, thank you. Board members, I don't, I don't think I know enough about this issue right now to say we should just charge ahead whether or not the, whether or not the applicant's going to pay for it. I don't know how you feel about it. Board members.
Well, my, my preference is to proceed with it. You know, whether we, whether we can work this out or not, I don't know.
I, I agree. That would be my, my preference too. If, if this is a a vernal pond, so to speak, we should know that. Seems to be conflicting evidence about that.
Mr. Houston, rough order of magnitude?
I believe it was five or $6,000.
Absent agreement from the applicant, I'm a little leery to charge ahead without talking to town council on that one, gentlemen. What do you think? I mean, I, I have the same inclination. I'd like to have the information, but I think we also need to be careful about just.
I would also want to touch base and make sure that they can schedule work within the timeframe.
Well, if I could ask you to do that, that would be good. Because if the answer is they can't do it until mid-July, in any event, that'll save, save us all some heartburn. Or increase our heartburn, but it won't be your problem. All right.
Yeah, probably just one quick comment. This get to be done probably sooner than later is because of the vernal pool is only have a really relatively short window to be examined and to get evidence for. So if you're getting laid and dries up, you, you don't get the direct evidence.
Right. Well, whatever this thing is, it got 1.7 inches of rain in the last two days unless it got different rain than I got. So. Yes, Mr. Callahan.
So Mark Callahan, I live at fifty-one Hunting Lane. I bought the property where this water pool is. And I've been here for forty-five years and I walk the land all the time. And before the fence went up on the Dust property, I went up, periodically go up into the orchard. And that pool of water there is there most of the year. Dries out sometimes during the summer. But generally, it's, there's water there and the Dust property in that corner right next to it is all wetlands because I've walked through that and I've gotten very wet at all times of the year. So people that think that this just dries up after a rainstorm, they're wrong.
A matter of some dispute as we hear. Thank you. Mr. Fitch.
Well, I, I hear the concern about spending money at this, at this point. That, I guess, is not our direct concern, frankly. If, if that can get worked out between the town and the applicant. But I would like to have this information. We are being asked to waive the local regulations.
Ms. Sweet.
You know, I think the best that we can offer at this time, you know, obvi- obviously this is, you know, we had been asking quite frankly for this information over the last couple of weeks. So, so we're, we're doing the best that we can under the timeframe. We can certainly ask our, our wetland scientist what kind of a statement he can make with regard to the claims made at this evening's meeting. You know, further than that, I, I need to speak with our, our attorney team.
Okay. And, and, and one of the issues that's beneath the surface, I don't, I don't mean it that way, but beneath the surface here is whether we're going to try to extend the deadline at all or not. There's a lot of wood to chop, there are a lot of live issues. I think the board has done a, a, a credible job of trying to move things ahead. But there's still a lot happening. You and your client have a position on May thirty-first, is it? And we're not extending? That's a yes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to let Chris answer that, but
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I, I think at this point, you know, it's our position that the board has enough information and we've given the board enough information that we've complied with the application requirements. I think a lot of things that were discussed today are really things that are going to be reviewed at the state level. And so I, I really think that we've provided enough information for the board and, and we are not going to extend beyond the time limitation set by the statute.
And as they are entitled to say, I will, I will point out to everybody. Mr. Fitch, do you want to make your comment maybe in the form of a motion then? Because to the extent that we can't get information from Mr. Houston's crew, that would be useful.
Yes, well, I, I would move that Mr. Houston's subcontractor be hired and authorized to collect further information as to the status of the water that collects in that area has been described as a vernal pool perhaps. And that would be useful to have. Be my motion.
And, and would you accept a friendly amendment that they deliver to us whatever information they can, not later than May thirtieth?
Yes.
All right. With that friendly amendment, I'd second it. And, and to put a not to exceed, just so that Tom doesn't surprise us with a hundred thousand dollar bill, not that he would. Would $5,000, $5,500 be a decent not to exceed in our motion?
Uh, yes, because the scope of our original wetland peer review was broader than this one issue. It was to take a look at the entire spectrum of wetland impact. So I think it would not come up to the original estimated amount.
All right. Well, to the extent they can advise us on any wetland impacts, since, since we've now hired you, up to $5,500, we'd like to hear. Again, only to the extent it's relevant to our waiver of the local regulations. If it's something that's going to be handled under the, the, the regular state process, you know, just tell us it's being handled under the regular state promise process, but don't waste time on it. Please.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. Moved and seconded. Fifty, not over $5,500 by May thirty-first. All in favor? I, I'll go first. No backboats, I.
Epic, aye.
Bitch, aye.
All right. The ayes have it, no nays. All right. So we sort of wandered around the landscape a little bit. Lynn, the next place I was going to try to go was to sort of recap where we were since last time. We last met on April fifteenth. The applicant graciously allowed people on the site after that. That was on the twenty-second, I think it was. Thank you for that. There have been, certainly I got seventy-five emails. There have been, I think, fourteen new filings posted on the town website, letters. And I, I tried to break those down into work streams. In terms of creative land and water, they filed a report on the twenty-third onsite, responded on the thirtieth, Allen and Major responded on May fifth, and then Creative Land and Water responded again on May sixth. So for those of you trying to untangle the thread, that's how, that's how all of those work. Tom Houston, shifting back to you on your stormwater. I think on the fifteenth of April, you had something like twenty not resolved. Allen and Major responded on the twenty-sixth. You then got back to them on the fourth saying that there were five that could be sold by conditioning. And I think three that were still, your loggerheads are open on. And then Allen and Major got back on May fifth. Where, where does all that settle out for you, Tom Houston? Are you?
Uh, we're, we're down to about five or six. We recommended condition of approval for most of those. I think we've gone back and forth and at this juncture, the items that we disagree on, we keep making the same arguments. So I don't come to an agreement. But I think the key things probably can be handled by conditions of approval. And just to put the whole thing in perspective, I think Allen and Major and the applicant have been responsive. We started off with fifty-five comments and we're down to half a dozen or so now. So we're moving in the right direction.
All right. And, and, and we get it that those half dozen are reasonable matters of disagreement between qualified engineers and acting in good faith.
Agreed, yes.
Okay. But I agree with that as well. It's, uh, Tom and I have had some banter going back and forth, but I think we're at a point now that I think there's just a few remaining items for us to address. And I think a lot of those can be addressed as minor conditions to a subsequent approval, should it come to that.
Another one of the work streams that I identified in those, all those filings was, was the NOBIS work stream. And I think we've talked about that enough tonight. I, I hope we will hear a little further from NOBIS and from Creative Land and Water on where they come out, having heard the applicant's answers to some of the questions. Obviously, questions from us, the board would be, if you think we should approve this project with conditions, what would those conditions be? And if you think we should not approve this project, what is the evidence that is more likely than not to cause a public health risk? Because that is the standard to which hack will hold us. Vernal pool, I think we've covered. The, the lead, the claimed vernal pool, the, the flooded depression as, as one's group would have it. Tom, we'll look forward to hearing from your people as soon as we can, as much as they can on that one. And I also want to note that groundwater protection weighed in essentially sharing with Board of Health and Conscom. I didn't see, I don't know if anyone from groundwater protection is listening, a, a precise different issue that they were raising that has not been articulated by others. And I think the, let's see, two, two others. Historic Commission wants to remind us to, if, if we do grant the permit, to make sure that we add a condition that they do what they're supposed to do under the State Historic Preservation Act. That'll be fairly easy to do if we choose to do it. And the Energy Conservation Group or Michael Lesser may be speaking for them or maybe speaking for himself had some suggestions. Again, it's on the website as to energy-saving devices.
Onto a couple of those?
Sure, please.
So first of all, I want to thank Mr. Lesser for his email. I have been in touch with our architect and we really actually don't have any problems with his conditions. So
Excellent.
Yeah, a happy note for the group. We are aware of, on, on, under Mass Historic that there does need down the road to be a project notification, so that, that is not a, a concern as, as well. Um, we just got the Conservation Commission note right, you know, right before the meeting. We haven't obviously had a chance to look at that. And I think, I think that's, I think that's all that we're able to respond to from, from that list of correspondence on this time. But at least there is some agreement on one, one, I think, actually very important matter, which is
Any, any issues we can knock down, we want to knock down. Mary and Norcha, you've got your hand up. Which of your many hats are you wearing? Citizen, AV expert, planning board?
I've just resigned as the AV expert. Uh, yeah, planning board. Uh, we, we would like to weigh in on the groundwater issue now that are in, we haven't uh, heard a sort of final wrap up of that, and uh, the planning board would like to just weigh in on that uh, before the next meeting. We're not prepared, I'm not prepared to do it here, here and now. We're still digesting the peer reviews.
Okay.
So.
So we should expect to hear from you, that's your message.
Right, yeah, and I actually forgot a very important item. We're probably going to withdraw our waiver for the groundwater.
The stormwater.
No, I think it was, hang on. Mike, I'm gonna. Sorry, this is, I, I think like with everyone else, we're all kind of, you know, going at warp speed here. Um. Make sure I have the right waiver here.
Then groundwater, such, chapter 21 of the bylaw.
After 21 groundwater protection, we're gonna, we're probably gonna withdraw the waiver for that. So, give us 24 hours and we'll take that off the table, hopefully.
Okay.
The stormwater issue is a, a little bit different, and uh, my understanding is that our, our town laws are basically the state laws, which are the same as the federal laws. And my understanding is that even in a 40B, that cannot be waived.
Correct.
I, Michael can probably speak to that. I believe him and Tom have been um, dealing with, with those matters.
That, that is correct. It's uh, state and federal compliant.
Okay, let, let me just ask the question carefully. There's nothing in our local bylaw that goes beyond the state or the federal rule. Is that correct?
As far as I understand, that is correct.
Okay, in that, in that case, it, 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 it would be moved, because that would be, that would be the only issue for, for our board.
Uh, that, that is correct, but on the other hand, if there are issues that the town should be aware of uh, that could be potentially uh, uh, ignored or not completely addressed by the state, we'd want to know about it.
Hey, that's, that's slightly different. Uh, that is a, a more a matter of uh, we can remind ourselves to show up at the State Historic Preservation Office at the right time, but we can't, for example, tell them what to do.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's essentially correct, but uh, we do want to still, the planning board would just like to alert you to the sorts of things you want to watch for.
Please.
In the state analysis.
Please, we, we will be grateful for that guidance. Um, Mr. Sean Colleen, I think you're next.
I'll echo the planning board's concerns with stormwater. I believe you'll be receiving something from the DPW that, that's probably in line with or mirroring theirs as well, because there's, there's still unanswered questions with stormwater and illicit discharges to the stormwater system, which is regulated and uh, I, I don't think will be allowed, but obviously that's been looked at. It's still one of those, one of the hanging items that the peer reviewer mentioned.
Great, thank you. Mr. Haverty, welcome. Uh, while you were away, your colleague conceded all of your prior positions in all of our prior hearings. We were very grateful.
That's good. Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Um, are you just joining us, or do you have something new to say, or?
No, I'm just joining to help out if necessary, although I'm sure Christopher is doing a wonderful job. Despite giving away all of my previous positions.
He's, he seems to be doing a, a, a good job of representing your team. Um, okay, uh. All right, so that's sort of the wrap up from last time. Lynn, do you want to talk about waivers? It's uh, what it's, after 9:30, people want to go a little further. We're obviously going to have to have at least one more hearing. Um, today is the, uh, okay, Paul, I'll get to you in just a moment. I see your hand up. Um, today is the 6th, and we run out of time on the um, uh, end of the week.
I'm happy to, if you want to spend, you know, half an hour or so going over the waivers, um, would you, do you want to start with uh, the, we've been obviously focusing a lot of um, effort and time on the um, hunting lane. Do you want to start with rental project or the ownership project?
Um, I, I think I would be, let me just see the participants who raised their hands for a second. Um, I think I, I'd be glad to let you lead that and, and take the waivers in the order in which you wish to take them. Uh, but I've got two hands ups, let me figure out what that is. One is Paul, go ahead, Paul.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, as Dr. Wang said, you know, describe the, the mounding and the runoff onto my property, onto the wetlands in my property. I obviously, you know, very concerned about this, you know, project going forward as proposed, and if everybody gets it wrong or it's not protected, you know, uh, I'm going to be tremendously impacted. But my question is, is, is the wetlands peer reviewer going to look at that issue that Dr. Wang mentioned about the mounding coming from Paul Hill, which is the tallest or the second tallest hill in, in Sherburne, coming down possibly onto the property, because I'm right below that and onto the wetlands?
I think our wetland, I think our wetlands peer reviewer was anticipating that there would be uh, data provided as to changes in groundwater, because on this project, you have two sort of countervailing issues. One is the mounding due to the uh, wastewater treatment disposal system as well as the mounding due to the stormwater systems, and you have kind of a drawdown withdrawal due to the wells, so I think a lot of that information is going to come after the ZBA decision, and I'll have to review with our consultant how they're going to handle that, so. But they could have to defer on that.
Okay, uh, I, the request from the ZBA would be to tell us what you can, based on the information you have when you have it, but before May 31st.
I understand.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, Daryl Beardsley, you were next. Daryl?
I just wanted to ask a, a, maybe a question of the ZBA's peer reviewer regarding whether the Board of Health stormwater requirement regarding no change more than plus or minus 10% of run on or runoff from the site, um, you know, should not change that much from the project. I don't know if that's part of the state regulations already or not.
The runoff from the pines probably complies with that. The runoff from uh, uh, Apple Hill complies with respect to uh, peak rates, but not volume.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And the other comments you just had too about mounding effects and from all the different issues uh, was also of concern to the Board of Health.
Uh, I would recommend and anticipate that mounding from all sources would be part of the uh, mod flow model that the applicant proposes to run, although I understand that would be after the ZBA decision.
Rick, you're on mute.
That's why, sorry. Michael Lesser, you're next, sorry.
Hi, I'm dropping into this meeting, Michael Lesser, Conservation Commission. Since we're having our meeting tonight and we have a number of hearings, I'm just taking a quick break to see whether anything came up on the, on the wetlands issues, how you're handling the comments we had, anything that uh, unfortunately, I can't attend the meeting uh, fully, so if there's anything that you can fill me in or that we should cover, that, or I could reply to, or how you're handling our comments. Um. I'm just trying to make myself available, I'm sensing on the, are you, how you're moving forward on our stuff.
I, I, I guess the, the short answer would be that there were an awful lot of topics tonight on, on which it would have been useful um, for Conservation Commission to be listening in, but the good news is the meetings are recorded. Um, and it can be up on YouTube in 24 hours, and I, I strongly suggest that you do so. There were discussions, uh, a, um, an extension seems very unlikely. There was discussion of the um, flooded depression or vernal pool or whatever it may be, whether it is or it is not. There was discussion of the uh, PSC reviewer looking at some wetlands issues. There, there's just an awful lot, but we, I can't. I'm not a videotape machine, I can't play it all back.
Then is there going to be a formal response or answer from the peer review on, to our comments? Because how are you doing that, given the time?
We're not sure, and there may not be time. We just hired them, so.
Okay, and is that, is there going to be a delineation ability to go through and actually delineate and review a delineation for some of the issues that we brought up? Or that's, there's not time for that, or there won't be permission?
Michael, our, our hearing is going to close with a, with a, with a, with a bang in 24 days.
Mm-hmm.
The, the time to delineate out your issues is, is probably not going to be there. It's one of the reasons why, and, and I know that was not solely up to you, but why I've been sort of hounding the Conservation Commission for quite a while to, to get comments in, and, you know, we, we will do what we can with, with what we have with the time we have, but.
Okay, just what, I mean, I understand that. I'm just trying to see what is going to be doable or what can be done, if, because a delineation can be done, for example, but uh, or, or not, uh, it's just a matter of whether they permit it or other things. Um. Okay, uh, yes.
They, they will also have to come with you, come to you in the normal state con, state.
Oh, I understand that. We're lucky. We're luckier than most, in the sense that we do have that. Uh, we do get that process, uh, so I recognize that. Um, then uh.
Forget the good news that we agreed to your energy conservation measures.
Oh, that's my next question. I was going to switch hats. I'm going to put on my resident hat. Uh, and ask, okay, so you agreed to both the Energy Star and the Water Sense material issues?
From what my understanding is, that Energy Star and Water Sense are somewhat in inter- interchangeable. They're just different technologies, according to our architect.
So they're two different standards, they're.
Yeah. For the rental project, I'm quite sure that we already have electric um, car charging stations. I know that we're going to have low-flow toilets. And so we can look, you know, we will look at both of those standards and um, we don't, I don't think we have a major issue with them, that's all.
Okay, that'll be nice, but right, but they're clearly very, they're very different standards. I appreciate it, and they're very different standards. That's all I want to make clear, that they apply to different equipment. Some of it overlaps, but they apply to different devices and whatever else, but, okay, I'll, I'll leave it at that then.
On, on, again, I want to be clear that on the, on the rental project, I, I don't, I don't know on the ownership project what we can or can't agree to, but for sure for the, the rental.
Well, hopefully you could do it on the other one too, because it's part of, we're doing a townwide efforts to basically get the residences to meet the Massachusetts uh, goal of net zero by 2050 and, and having that kind of equipment in any house for sale, and they, uh, and you're basically constructing under the newer, under the older building standards, but the newer ones will probably require things like that. But to the extent that you could be progressive enough to include it in this project, uh, that will help the town, the local, lots of help on many levels, um, so, appreciated. Okay, I'll uh, leave it at that then.
All right, thank you, Michael. We, we, we know you do a lot for the town, wearing many hats. Um, other hands up that I'm missing? Don't see any. All right, um, Lynn, you are going to try to walk through some waivers, I think.
If I can share the screen here, and we're gonna uh, do a, a little tag team here. Um, I'm gonna have, um, if it's, uh, pleases the board, um, Paul, just sort of give you an overview of how the waivers are handled.
Please.
Because. Nope. Is, is, Paul, do you want to just talk about the difference between procedural waivers and other waivers?
Sure, and it'll obviously help if I unmute myself first. So this is the most recent waiver list, Lynn?
Yeah, this is for the, the rental property.
Okay, um, so first of all, the, I, I, I guess I can sort of do a general discussion of how we treated uh, procedural waivers as opposed to how we're treating substantive waivers. So I'm sure as all the board members are, are already aware, um, chapter 40B subsumes all other local permitting processes, which means that an applicant is not required to obtain special permits or local permits under different bylaws um, or other things of that nature. It's all part of a single comprehensive permitting process. So there are certain areas where we have requested waivers, but we've actually noted that the waiver is denied um, because of the fact that it's not necessary to obtain that waiver. It's simply a procedural part of the comprehensive permit process. But we do like to make sure that it's noted in a board's decision, because it can help uh, avoid potential confusion later on when there's somebody comes along and says, oh, well, you didn't get, you know, a waiver of this special permit requirement. Well, you know, it's helpful to have it right in the decision that that waiver was requested and denied as unnecessary. So if we want to start going through the different specific waivers, um, we've asked for a waiver of section 1.6 of the zoning bylaws. And that's a waiver, I'm sorry, this is of the when is, is this for a section?
We haven't actually written. We haven't written the decision yet, so that we haven't put in what is waived or denied. This is a full application, so I can understand that you're confused as to what's a procedural waiver. And what is a substantive.
I can go through and point out then where there are procedural things that we will, uh, we will suggest that the board um, deny as procedural and therefore unnecessary. Um, but I'm looking at uh, 1.6 prohibited uses any building structure sign or any use of any building structure or premises not expressly allowed, permitted, or exempted by this bylaw is prohibited. So obviously, that would prohibit the use uh, on the property, and therefore a waiver is necessary, so we've requested that waiver. Um, section 2.4, lots in two districts, um, where a district boundary line divides a lot in the single or joint ownership at the time such line is adopted. The regulations for the less restricted portion of such lot shall extend not more than 30 feet into the more restricted portion, provided the lot has the required frontage on the street in the lesser restrictive district.
So the North Main Street property is in two different zoning districts, um, business and residential.
So again, this is really a, a use um, waiver, which, without which the project wouldn't be allowed.
Correct.
Um, section 3.1, basic requirements, um, no building str- you went too far, Lynn.
Did I get too far?
Yep. Uh, no building structure or land shall be adapted, constructed, or used for any purpose or in any manner other than as permitted and set forth in section 3.2, and we're requesting waivers with regard to section 3.2, because again, a 60-unit multifamily residential development would not be allowed in this zoning district. Uh, which then gets to 3.2-26 multifamily dwellings, and we're requesting a waiver to allow the construction of a 60-unit multifamily residential development. Um, section 3.2-28, off-site septic systems. Uses permissive in residence EA district, prohibit in all others. Um, the applicant is seeking to construct an actual onsite wastewater treatment facility. Um, I guess it's really the board's determination as to whether or not this provision would even be applicable, or whether or not this is really more of a procedural waiver, um, because it's not uh, uh, off-site septic system, it's a wastewater treatment facility um, that's approved by DEP, the groundwater discharge permit standard.
Your whys can include it in the list.
Yeah, it's, it's always, uh, 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 we, we tend to be over inclusive rather than under inclusive and then we compare down as we go along. Um, section three, table of use regulations. Again, we're seeking a, a waiver to allow this use in the zoning districts. Um, sections 3.3 and 3.4 not applicable, so those can actually be eliminated. 4.1 basic requirements can also be eliminated. No waivers requested. Section 4.2 schedule of dimensional requirements. Um, so here we comply with some of the dimensional requirements. We need waivers of others. Um, we meet the minimum lot area requirement, the minimum frontage requirement, the minimum lot width requirement. Um, we meet the minimum front yard requirement on Main Street. Um. In Hunting Lane. Lynn, I can't really read those.
We do not meet the side yard requirement.
We require a waiver of the minimum side yard requirements, uh, rear yards not applicable. We are requesting a waiver of the maximum number of stories from 2.5 to 3.5. We are not requesting, however, a waiver of the maximum heights. Um, and maximum building area and open space area is not applicable. Got a number of other not applicable provisions, which can be deleted from the waiver request list. Down to section five, special regulations. So minimum parking requirement in section 5.1.1, we're requesting a waiver.
We are actually not.
Not. We're actually providing 1.7 spaces per dwelling unit. So we're providing more than what is required under the zoning bylaw. 5.1.3 parking area plans. So we are seeking a waiver, um, in entirety. There should be submitted to the planning board for approval before a building permit shall be issued or a use permit granted, a plan of the proposed parking facility showing area and dimensions of the lot location, areas and size of the buildings, maximum area of the building to be used for selling, offices and other uses, maximum number of employees to be accommodated at any one time, maximum seating and or sleeping capacity where applicable. Not really sure how that corresponds to parking area plans, Lynn.
It was, it was confusing to us and, and I think it's more that all of, um, our plans have been submitted to the zoning board of appeals rather than the planning board.
So this appears to me to be the sort of procedural waiver that does, doesn't require substantive relief from the board and, and therefore can be denied with that notation.
Right. But you don't want someone claiming later, you forgot to go to the planning board.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, section 5.1.4, we don't need a waiver. Um. Section 5.1.5 screening of parking areas, we're seeking a waiver, although we didn't list what the requirement is. Um, but what we're looking for is a waiver to allow screening and buffering as shown on the plans rather than what is required under the bylaw.
Correct. And the same thing with the sign.
Yep. Section 5.3 special permits in business district. Again, we were not requesting a waiver of that. Section 5.4 material removal. So this is an earth removal provision. And again, um, this would be a procedural requirement. Lynn, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, so again, this is not a substantive waiver that we need relief. Simply we can't be required to go seek, um, an alternative permit to allow this. Section 5.5 floodplain district.
Not applicable.
Okay, because we're not within this lovely district. Section 5.6 not applicable, section 5.8 not applicable. Section 5.9 water protection, water supply protection district. Um, not applicable as the project does not propose the construction of buried petroleum storage tanks. And that's not a waiver that needs to be granted. 5.10 not applicable. I want a section six. General authority and conditions, section 6.1, as required by chapter 48 of the general laws, the zoning bylaw provides for specific types which are only permitted in specific districts upon the granting of a special permit by the special permit granting authority and the manner provided herein. And again, this is really a procedural requirement. Um, we can't be required to obtain, uh, separate special permits. But again, we don't need a specific waiver. There's nothing substantive about this waiver requirement. It's a procedural waiver. Section seven administration, 7.0 procedure and coordination. All applications for the construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, demolition, removal, or changes in the occupancy of building and structures shall be submitted to the building commission in accordance with the state building code. We can't get that. State building code requirement is inherent. It's not waivable under chapter 40B. Such application for a new structure, the expansion of an existing structure shall be accompanied by either an order of conditions by the Sherborne Conservation Commission or a superseding order of conditions by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection or a negative determination of applicability. And again, that's not waivable.
We will.
Yeah, I think, I think we can eliminate this entire waiver request.
Okay, got it. You are getting towards the end of the list.
Section eight, historic districts, not applicable.
Uh, excuse me.
It is, it is.
According to the, according to the memo, the historic district, uh, sent. Uh, this.
But this isn't in a, is this in a historic district or is it a historic structure?
It, it is in a historic district.
It is in a historic district.
Yeah, it is in a historic district, but we still comply with the state regulations and not the local regulations. So we need to reword this.
So, yeah, so we, Lynn, we're gonna need to look at whether or not there are substantive requirements of this, the, the town historic distic, district. To determine whether or not we actually need a waiver or whether, again, this is just a procedural waiver.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
Required to obtain a separate approval from a historic district commission. Um, however, if there are substantive requirements, then you do need to request specific waivers of those requirements.
Right. And, and, and look at it carefully when you do. I, I think your plan requires, uh, knockdown of, of all or part of a historic barn. Ron, do I have that right?
Yes.
So if that requires any waivers, we will make sure to update this and get that to you.
Thank you.
Chapter 17, general wetlands bylaw. And again, Lynn, are we seeking any specific substantive waivers under the wetlands bylaw or is this just procedural?
I believe it's procedural.
All right, we'll clarify that.
Right. Take, take, take a look. I think there might be some substance in there. Time to come. Michael Lester, I don't know if you're on, but I.
Yes. I'm here. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes. Um. Does the general wetlands bylaw have, uh, provisions that, uh, the, that these projects uh, don't comply with?
Uh, is there gonna be any, uh, is there gonna be any fill or tree cutting with stumps on site? Cause we have specific rules about, about the quality of fill and no bu, and no burying of stumps that where there were, I was, we were gonna, part of tonight's meeting was to basically write you a memo for both, for both projects that those particular regulations about fill and stumps should not be waived.
Okay. So.
And I don't think.
You're, you're on notice.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The Conservation Commission letter that was delivered earlier uh, right before the meeting that evidently came out a while ago, but didn't make its way to Gene and to us, does, does that have that in there or is there going to be another letter that we should be looking for?
There will be another letter that references those specific and quotes those two toes, two different regulations.
Okay, I, I don't, I mean, at first blush, I, I don't imagine those are going to be problematic, but we'll take a look for sure.
And Mr. Chairman, when, when I write decisions for boards, I always include conditions that, you know, that are address import of fill and prohibit the burying of stones. That, that's perfectly reasonable.
Right. And, and, and we get that and we, and we understand. Oh, but in fairness to you guys, you know, request the waiver and then it'll be on the record.
Yep, great. Uh, chapter 18, historic district commission.
Again, yeah.
You have to revisit that one.
Yeah.
Chapter 21 groundwater protection bylaw.
Yeah, that's the one that we said that I believe we can, can comply with so that we don't need to get a waiver.
So it would just be, again, the procedural requirement of obtaining a permit. Chapter 22, construction of driveways. No driveway shall be constructed or substantially altered at the point of intersection with a public street or private way unless a written permit is first obtained from the superintendent of streets in accordance with the rules and regulations adopted by the board of selectmen. No provision of these rules and regulations shall operate so as to prevent construction on any lot with such construction would otherwise be permitted. Uh, and again, this is a procedural waiver. It's not a substantive waiver. Will comply with all of the requirements, uh, of the board of selectmen. Chapter 25, comprehensive stormwater management bylaw. Um, Lynn, do we have specific provisions of this that we need to waive?
Uh, we'll have to take a look at that, Paul. Um, I think we've got a couple of specific items. Uh, we do meet the, and we've gone through this with, uh, Mr. Houston relative to the treatment of TSS and phosphorus under the MS4 conditions. So we are meeting those requirements. Uh, I think we'll just have to revisit, um, and look at the specifics for this.
Okay, so we'll update this and if there are any specific waivers, we'll.
Paul, can I ask you to pause for just a second? Uh, we've got a hand raised. I think Sean, clean.
Uh, well, I took it down, but I'm not sure. I mean, you, are they, are they asking to waive the entire stormwater management bylaw?
Town stormwater management bylaw, yes.
Okay, that was adopted from the state, so.
Well, again, I, I think what they're saying is.
Comply with state requirements.
Right. Uh, uh, but, but, but let's not leave this too quickly. To the extent that that stormwater management bylaw requires anything other in addition to what the state requires, they're asking that it be waived.
But, but we will provide additional information to, to detail which provisions, if any, that we propose to not comply with, that, that are different from the, the state requirements.
Perfect. Perfect.
Um, we have rules and regulations of the Sherborne Planning Board. We're, we're technically not required to obtain waivers of subdivision rules and regulations because we're not proposing the subdivision on the rental portion. So these, none of these are actually necessary. It can be helpful. Um, you know, just to point out what would be necessary to be waived if this were a subdivision. But ultimately, none of these waivers need to be granted.
Right.
We will.
We can skip over that.
Skip and ride ahead.
This is all subdivision, yep.
There's no subdivision because your entire Apple Hill project is.
Well.
I'm sorry.
It's the rental project.
Red, you're, you're, I'm sorry, I got them backwards. 31 Hunting Lane is all condominium on one lot.
Correct. So that's also not a subdivision.
Yep, got it.
It's true. They're not subdivisions, but the rules and regs cover more than just subdivisions, just so you're alerted to that.
Okay.
Not sure legally your rules and regulations, uh, Marion can cover more than subdivisions.
Uh, they do, yes.
Well, I, I'm, I'm talking about the state statute. Chapter 41 may not let you legislate in other areas. You might have them, but it may not be enforceable.
Uh, yes, that's true. Uh, but I'm not sure about the scenic road, uh, bylaw, which is.
Ah, right. That's, that, that's separate.
Which is section two. Oh, no, this is, uh, yeah.
Is, what's a scenic road?
Cutting is wrong. That's all.
Al- almost every road in Sherburne is the flip answer. Um, the, 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 the less flip answer is, uh, Gino, help me out. Is it chapter 81? Um, the scenic road statue?
Yeah, that's a state law that requires, um, hearing before the planning board, but only to remove trees or stone wall that are in the street right of way.
And Hunting Lane is a scenic road, so you may need to look at that on the development team.
But, but again, although the scenic road law, the scenic road statute is a state law, it is a local permitting process and it is subject to chapter 40B.
Right. Right. So, so you, you may, you may very well be saying, listen, to the extent I need to get a, a local permit, I want a waiver, waiver of it now. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'm just going back to the whole subdivision question, uh, 760 CMR 56.057 says if a project does not request a subdivision approval, waivers from subdivision requirements are not required. Although a board may look to subdivision standards such as requirements for road construction as a basis for required project conditions, in which case the applicant can seek waivers from such requirements. Um, so it would really would only be if you were looking to try to impose road construction standards that are consistent with the subdivision rules of regulations that we could then ask you to basically not impose that as a condition.
Right. And, and, and Marion and Sean and, and, um, Tom Houston, I don't think there's been any request that we upgrade that driveway into 31 Hunting Lane into the sort of road like Bogusdale Brook Road down at the other end of town. It's a big wide subdivision road.
No, that's correct.
No, but the fire department will have to have some jurisdiction on the access. Correct?
Well. To, to the extent that the fire department's jurisdiction on access is under a local rule, they ought to raise their hand right away because we're the local issuer.
And to.
You can't, you can't wait. You, you cannot waive the fire department's access rules and regulations. You can't, you just can't.
Um, if, if Sean, with, with, with respect, if they are local rules and regulations, they can be. If they, if they, if they.
No.
Under state statute.
Correct.
That's different.
We've had.
Sorry. Fire access roads that are under state.
Fire department.
Right.
Okay.
So I, I'll give you an example because I'm actually dealing with a, a situation, um, currently where this is coming up. So there's two aspects. There is very specific standards under the state fire code for fire access roads. Um, there's also local discretion by, you know, the, the, the fire official in charge of access um, in which they may actually impose a condition or a requirement that goes above and beyond the state fire code requirements. So that local discretion is a local permit that is subsumed as part of the comprehensive permit process, but the state fire access requirements are not local conditions and we are definitely required to comply with them.
Um, Sean and Paul, I, I, I'd have to go back in the materials, but I thought the fire department was relatively comfortable with design of both uh, Apple Hill and, and, and Hunting Lane.
No.
We've, we've had extensive conversations with the fire department and this was covered during the traffic peer review with regard to the fire trucks, with regard to the location of the hydrants, with regard to not blocking Powderhouse Lane and so on and so forth. So this, this was covered in, in previous hearings. If there are issues with the fire department, we're not aware of them.
Right. Okay. So let me, let me say this. Uh, Sean, if, if the fire department is not happy with the plans that are on the table, they need to raise their hand right away. Please.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're not here, but I, I assure you, there's nobody comfortable with Powderhouse Lane being the fire access um, and the main access to that property. So I, I assure you'll get a response from.
We've had, we've had several meetings with the chief, um, and one of the items that we had addressed was providing a dry hydrant connection out to Main Street, uh, which you were actually present at, Sean.
No, I'm aware of it. Please don't put words in my mouth. I, I'm aware of that meeting. I was there and, and the dry hydrant does not do anything for the, for the cardiac arrest or, or many other site issues there. Don't.
Okay. Well, I'm just.
It wasn't there. So we're not, we're not going to rehash that meeting. I, I'll, I'll reach out to the chief. I'll make sure he's, he's aware of the issues. Um, Powderhouse Lane is, is 16 feet wide from between a hydrant and a pole. That's not a main access to that site on 41 North Main, so.
Okay. Well, if, if, if the fire department is going to object under, uh, Okay, well, if, if the fire department is going to object under, under, under their local discretion, as Paul says, I think we all need to know that right away, please.
I'm not even sure that's local discretion. It's not a, there's not a proper access into the front of that property via Powderhouse. That's not local.
Right, but, but the important point is that if it's local discretion, it's up to the ZBA to decide whether it's a good idea or not. If it's not local discretion, it's a state statute and we have nothing to say about it.
Okay, all due respect, the fire chief's in a meeting right now, so we can't expect that he's going to be in every ZBA meeting to.
I don't, I don't expect him to be in every ZBA meeting. I'm not.
He's not going to raise his hand right now and, you know, frankly, the DPW director's not in every meeting either to raise his hand.
Sean, I get that. I'm, I, I don't mean the, they should raise their hand right away in a critical way, just like, but we're running out of time. That's all.
Okay.
It's, it's good that you're raising this now because if it's a problem, let's get it out on the table before the hearing closes. Thank you. Okay, all right. Well, but that's, that's why you run through the list is to find out if there are surprises.
All right, so next on the waiver list is Board of Health Regulations, Section One Sewerage Disposal. Lynn, can you scroll down?
Sorry.
No system or facility to be used for treating, neutralizing, stabilizing, or disposing of wastewater from homes, public buildings, commercial or industrial buildings, or any other type of establishments shall be located, constructed, altered, repaired, or installed until a disposal works construction permit. Such work shall be issued by the Board of Health. In this instance, this is not applicable because we're not seeking a disposal works connection permit. We're seeking a groundwater discharge permit from the DEP. Section two, just domestic water supply, no private or some a public water supply shall be installed, altered, repaired until a permit has been obtained from the Board of Health. But this is not a private or something public water supply. This is going to be a full-on public water supply approved by the DEP.
Right, and Paul, could you hold for a second? Darrell Bursley, I think you had your hand up.
Just wanted to mention that. So, sorry you don't have our memo yet, but you will be getting it very shortly. There are going to be a few things that we are going to recommend not waiving. For example, section eighteen point three, temporary facilities, which calls for having some sort of sanitary facilities on site during construction. There may be other requirements that cover that, but it's just I can't see any reason, or the board does not see any reason for waiving that. It's a perfunctory thing. It should be standard best practice and good for the employees trying to work at the construction site. So we did not give a blanket waivers to our regulations and they're itemized and I would say there is nothing that we address that should impede this project at all. It's really best practices sorts of comments that we have.
Mr. Chairman, we'll certainly review that letter and, you know, if they're reasonable and won't impede the project, I can't imagine we'll have any objection.
Right. Yes, so Darrell, please get it to us as soon as you can and thank you. All right, Mr. Everdine, please proceed.
Subsection six point zero, well location states domestic well should be located no less than seventy-five feet from any adjacent well. We're looking to have wells located fifty feet apart as allowed by the DEP. Subsection seven point zero, number of wells, no well should be used to supply more than one dwelling unless permitted as a public water supply, which is exactly what we're proposing to do. But this is actually isn't a waiver that's necessary. Section three, public and environmental health review regulations and standards for other than a single family dwelling on a single lot. Lynn, can you scroll up, please? Too far.
Too far?
Too far. Okay, that's good. The applicant for any proposed project of ten or more dwelling units, whether in a subdivision or an approved roadway or any commercial or industrial development with a gross floor area exceeding seventy-five hundred square feet, or a designed sewage flow of two thousand gallons per day or greater, or any planned unit development or any earth removal project exceeding three hundred and fifty cubic yards of material per lot, or a thousand cubic yards of material per project, shall submit an environmental health impact report to the Board of Health. And again, you know, this is part of the forty B process. The applicant is getting approval of its onsite wastewater treatment facility from the DEP. There's no local approval for that. Section four, design, operation, and maintenance of small wastewater treatment facilities. Does this give a width, I'm sorry, like a gallonage associated with that, Lynn? What constitutes a small wastewater treatment facility?
Um, says. I think it's because it's in compliance with Title V and we're not complying with Title V or, or because we're doing groundwater just.
Yeah, in any event, this is not a small wastewater treatment facility. This is a wastewater treatment facility requiring full approval by the DEP. So I don't think that this is actually applicable.
Yeah, so we will absolutely positively clean this up. We look forward to getting additional comments and we'll try and turn it around in the, in the next week to ten days before the next hearing. That is the end of the rental. Let me just bring up the ownership.
Ownership, I think, is probably going to be.
When you redistribute this, we do it as a nice red line, the way you, looks like you would set up that one.
Sure.
Absolutely, I will. We will make sure that you understand what the changes are for sure.
Well, and it also just will help our process because there are a lot of parties in town and some people may have looked at the earlier version and not the later one, and this will just make it easier to say, here it is in black and white.
Yeah, and we can also put in a column of with your permission of recommendations of what is procedural and, and therefore would not be waived.
We're glad that we'd welcome such a column.
Yeah, um, so here is the homeownership one.
And, and the homeownership one is going to be very similar to the rental. Obviously, there'll be differences in terms of we're looking for approval of, you know, the twenty rental unit, I'm sorry, homeownership units rather than sixty rental units. But one thing I'm noticing here, Lynn, that we didn't have in the rental aspect was the request for waivers of the Sherborne zoning Board of Appeals Comprehensive Permit Rules.
Yeah.
So we, we should be adding these waivers to the rental as well.
Yeah, let me make sure that I've brought the right ones up here. I'm a little in. Yeah, let, let me, yep, we'll make sure that happens.
Yep.
I don't think we, I don't think we got the ZBA comp permit rules until after we actually filed.
Okay, right, and we'll, we'll, we'll want to have a careful look at what you're asking us to waive there.
So a lot of what is here is because your comprehensive permit rules and regulations are out of date. They reference an older version of the state regulations. So if looking at number one, purpose and authority requires compliance with seven sixty CMR thirty-one point zero one, that has been superseded by seven sixty CMR fifty-six point zero zero.
That, that sort of cleanup, Paul, is, is very helpful, but if, but if you say we want you to waive the part that says we can turn you down if you stiff us on fees, no, we're not going to waive that.
We have, I, I can assure you that we have complied with all fees that.
And you, you certainly have. I was making a, a.
Oh, sorry, it's getting late.
A joking reference to another developer who did just that, which is why the rule is there.
Oh, yeah, we know better than ask for waiver of fees at this point.
All right. Please go ahead.
A lot of all of these.
Second one is really.
I'm going to scroll ahead.
We went too far.
I did, I thought we were just gonna, just kinda, all right.
Well, go up a little, a little more.
Not much further to go up here, that's.
No, we're good.
We're good.
So, comprehensive permit rule three point one A and C requires all structures five or more units shall have site development plans signed by a registered architect, and then it says drawing shall be signed by a registered architect. And the, the CMR requirements don't require that it be signed, it just needs to be prepared by a registered architect. I'm not really sure that that's a big deal one way or the other.
Yeah, I, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest if my, unless my fellow board members disagree that you go quickly through these so-called conforming changes. They are helpful to us and maybe, maybe in the future we'll change our regulations, but, but to the extent that you are asking us to make a waiver that conforms a bad reference or something that doesn't fit with the state regulations, I think you'll find us receptive to that.
Okay. Um, again, section three point one J requires compliance with seven sixty CMR thirty-one point zero one, so that's changed.
Yeah, there's no more.
Three point one L, it looks like, requires things that the boards can no longer require of an applicant's pro forma financial statements, proposed regulatory agreement, things of that nature that are within the exclusive jurisdiction of the subsidizing agency pursuant to the Amesbury case from two thousand and ten, which was decided after these regulations were adopted, so. Again, the next one is just clarification that seven sixty CMR thirty and thirty-one were superseded by seven sixty CMR fifty-six. You can go down then. Same thing for the next one, three point one N, and then that's it for the comprehensive permit rules and regulations that were on the zoning bylaws. And again, it's one point six because we need a waiver of the use requirements. Two point four, lots into districts. Three point one, basic requirements. We're, we're looking for a waiver to allow the twenty unit, single-family residential developments. Looks like we've eliminated the waiver of two point, three point two dash twenty-six.
Yeah, when we, when we switched from the duplexes to the single-family homes, that's what these are from.
Again, table of use regulations, we're requesting approval of a use that's not otherwise allowed. Dimensional requirements. Down. Lynn, can you just go down a little bit?
I'm trying to, sorry.
Okay, so again, lot acreage requirement, we meet, we meet the, the frontage requirement, lot width requirement, front yard requirement, we meet, we meet side yard requirement, we meet the minimum rear yard requirement, we meet this number of stories requirement, maximum height, so we actually comply with all of the dimensional requirements.
Well, yes, you, you meet the two acre minimum for one house, but, but not the forty plus acres you'd need for the twenty-seven houses.
And I, I mean, unfortunately, that's one of the, the nuances that sort of gets lost in this waiver request process is, you know, it's, the number of structures in a lot of bylaws will have, as you can only have one principal structure.
Including ours.
So we, so Lynn, we should be looking at that and requesting a waiver of that.
Yeah, and I think you did, I think you did request a waiver of it.
Yep. Section five point one point one, minimum parking requirements, we're proposing to meet that requirement. Five point one point three, parking area plans, and again, this is a procedural requirement. We, we're not looking to submit anything to the planning board, it's all with the Board of Appeals. Screening of parking areas, again, we're looking for approval based upon the plans as shown. Signs, same thing. Earth removal, again, this is a procedural waiver, not a substantive waiver. Blood plane district, we don't require a waiver. Keep scrolling. Water supply protection districts. Applicable. Special permit, again, not required to get special permits. Administration, again, was a procedural requirement.
I think these were the ones that we said we were not going to waive, the seven point O.
Right, we can, we can't get waivers of these.
Yeah, we're going to take those out. Hang on, just gotta get, get my mouse again. Hard to mouse and write at the same time.
Wetlands by law, again, we're going to list specific provisions of the bylaw that need to be waived. Groundwater protection by law. Again, same thing, any specific provisions will provide. Construction of driveways, again, is a procedural waiver request.
Yeah, I think chapter twenty-one we're going to get rid of again.
Okay.
Okay, driveways. Water management, we talked about as well.
Yep. And then again, rules and regulations of the Sherborne Planning Board, non-applicable.
Well, I, are, are they or aren't they? Because we are doing a condominium on one.
It's not a subdivision. It's not a subdivision. It's on a single.
Okay.
They're not a subdivision.
The rules and regs cover more than just subdivisions. For example, the, the scenic road administration that is part of this. You have mislabeled, you have plans not requiring approval under the subdivision control law. That section refers to A and R developments that are not subdivisions but are multi-lot.
Right, we.
Plans not requiring approval under the subdivision control law, that's what A and R technically are called.
Yeah, that's right.
But it is part of the subdivision control.
Oh, right, yeah. For your back, you, in, in your previous one on the pines, you had, under that heading, you had the scenic road by law, so it was just mislabeled or misplaced. You might want to.
We'll look at that.
Is, Marion, is North Main Street scenic?
No.
Okay, I wouldn't have thought so. Got it. But Hunting Lane definitely.
Found the one town, with one road in town that isn't.
That's right, Hunting Lane definitely is.
Yep, got it.
Only because state numbered routes are not allowed to be scenic roads.
Okay, but, but, but all kidding aside, Paul and Marion, I think to the extent that Marion's board has, and it, I used to be on that board almost thirty years ago, I think there are scenic road by law rules and regulations that are not under chapter forty-one, they're not planning, they're not subject to control rules and regulations, but you may want to take a look because to the extent that those regulations implement the state statute and require you to do anything more than the state statute would require you to do, and I think they do, you may want to have them waived.
Yep.
I don't think they do. Correct me if I'm wrong, Gina. I believe ours are the same as the state, the scenic road by law.
Well, yeah, well, the state, just, the statute just basically says you have to have a hearing before planning board. All the details are in our regulations. And as Paul said earlier, it's a local permitting process, even though it's a state law in that.
It's similar to, you know, the, the right of the planning board or the Board of Appeals to issue special permits under chapter forty-eight, section nine. It's a state statute, but it's a local permitting process.
Right, so just, just take a look at it because if you're, if you're going to want new waivers there.
Yep, we, we will double check those.
Put them in your list.
Yep.
Yep. All right, I think we.
Through the rest of the subdivision.
I think that's procedural.
Yep, I, I think we just, we've got to check the water health again.
Yeah.
It's going to be the same responses, you know, as the rental said.
Right, I, I imagine your, your, your Board of Health responses will be unified for both projects.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like those are just construction standards that we would be following anyway.
Okay. Is that your presentation on waivers, ma'am?
I think we've got groundwater impact, not applicable, design standards.
These are all planning board regulations.
Yeah, these are all planning board regulations that we were just waiving because you're reviewing that, the ZBA is reviewing them.
Right.
We're almost to the end here. We do have the scenic road waiver here. We have the site plan review is a procedural waiver as well. But we may not need to waive it because it's under subdivision control.
Right, and, and, and four point four is a, is a, is a specialized crossbreed that's part zoning, part planning, but it's a local item, so you should just get it waived to be on the safe side.
Okay, leave it in. Okay, leave it in, um, yeah, and then we get to, uh, Board of Health, the same sort of, uh, regulations, I think, that we went through in domestic water supply, well, what the wells are the same, and.
Those are all the same as.
Yeah, and the Board of Health, which we know we're going to get some comments on, and wastewater treatment, so these last ones are the same. So that's.
Okay, all right, great, thank, very helpful walkthrough, um. Okay, I was going to suggest maybe that we pick a next meeting, board members. Unless you have something else you want to cover tonight, Lynn.
Uh, we do have a meeting, um, previously scheduled, um, on the, um, twenty-seventh.
We want to do something before now on the twenty-seventh, board members, twenty-seventh would be our last meeting.
Well, we're going to have meetings subsequent to this twenty-seventh for consideration of the final.
Absolutely, that's true.
Yeah, you have forty days from once the hearing's closed to actually deliberate and render the decision. And, and if you need additional time, we could probably give you some more time.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'm also wondering, um, whether or not we are at a place where the, you know, for the next meeting, or, you know, whether, if, if you're able to, to have another meeting in between there, we, you know, we obviously need to fix the waivers, but there hasn't been a proposed, um, permit either uh, to review, in addition to the other, other matters that were raised tonight.
Right, um, well, I think we're a, a ways from proposing a proposed permit, um, yeah, Paul, before you were on, um, Lynn indicated that the inclination to, to move the May thirty-one date is, uh, i- is low on your side, um. That, that cuts both ways, um, you know, to the extent that we have to craft, they said that we grant a permit and have to grant, grant conditions based on incomplete information. That will be a, a little bit of a self-inflicted wound for the developer side, but, but it, but, but as you know, having done an awful lot of these, it's a, it's a delicate dance, you don't, also don't want to give us to Christmas, um, so, um, I'd ask you to think about what's, what's in your interest there. Um, and obviously you don't have to get back to us tonight, but board members, I wonder if we ought to try to set something between now and the twenty-seventh. I'm a little wary of having only one more meeting, what, what do you think, Jonathan, what do you think, Ron?
Well, um, just looking at my calendar.
And I'm not dogmatic about that, you say you want to go to the twenty-seventh, that's okay.
Well, I'm, I'm satisfied going to the twenty-seventh.
That would certainly give the various consultants more time to react. For which I'm sure they would be grateful, Ron?
Yeah, I, I think going to the twenty-seventh, um, seems more reasonable than.
Okay.
I mean, there's not much time between now and the twenty-seventh, so.
Correct. Only a couple of weeks out, okay, um. All right, I entertain a motion to continue the hearing until May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the moving, the, the meeting until, uh, May twenty-seventh at seven PM.
Second. Any lively discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Mr. Clean.
Myself and probably a few others are going to send you letters, uh, for you to consider.
That would be great, it won't be the first.
It, no, it definitely won't be, my, my question is, um, or my concern is those letters are going to cross paths with, um, some last minute, um, responses from the engineers and the consultants, so, so much like tonight. You know, I, I mean, I, I got several emails ye- late yesterday um, and had no opportunity to send you anything e- except show up in this meeting, and, and my fear is the same will happen on the twenty-seventh. You'll have something from me, for sure, and, and I suspect the fire chief. But I, but I don't think we'll be able to react to, uh, any, any consultants that may, uh.
Right, I, 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 I hear you and I appreciate your scrambling to attend tonight, and I, I guess my only, um, request on that would be for everybody to get things in as quickly as they can, I think, particularly on this hearing, a whole lot of things came in at the last minute. That has not been the trend line, I think everyone's worked very hard to get things in earlier, to give everybody a chance to read and react. Um, but it certainly did not work out tonight, and, and Sean, I appreciate your situation, so to the extent you encourage people to get in as soon as they can, we'll give people a chance to, um, uh, to react and, and, and definitely copy Genie on anything you send, because she'll put it right up on the website and that way everybody can see and react.
For sure.
Thanks.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, I don't think we've, had, had, have we had our vote yet?
No, no.
All right, um, so it's been moved and seconded that we continue to the twenty, night of the twenty-seventh, um, seven PM. Um, all in favor, aye, uh, we have to do this by roll call, call, no backvotes, aye.
Stephen, aye. It's aye.
All right, the ayes have it, um, it is twenty-five of ten, sure, we're all a little bit tired of looking at each other. Um, so I'd wish everybody a good evening and thank you for your time and, and patience in what's been a very long process.